We will begin tonight's candidate forum. Welcome to the Fergus Falls City Council Ward Four Candidates Forum. Participating this evening is write-in candidate Rod Speedall and Ward Four incumbent Randy Sinstalyn. My name is Chris Schulke. I'm the Executive Director of the Otter Tail County Historical Society, and I will be your moderator this evening. The timekeeper for tonight's forum is Mark Helen from Otter Tail Power Company. So here's the format that we will take, and it's very similar to the previous ones that have been used in other forums sponsored by the Noon Koanahs. The forum will begin with each candidate giving a three-minute introduction and conclude with a three-minute closing statement. Six questions will be presented to the candidates. I will rotate the order in which the candidates respond. Mr. Speedall will answer first based on a coin flip that we had a few minutes ago. The answer period is three minutes each. The timer will wave a white flag or piece of paper when 30 seconds remain, and then he will wave it vigorously, I guess, when time is up, since we don't have another colored paper, but that's okay. And so we just asked you, please, respect the timer.
Will you be comfortable with people taking their phones off?
Yes, I haven't got to that yet, so... We will, please, we'll also take questions from the audience. There are pieces of paper outside the doorway there, and a volunteer will be taking those questions and presenting them to me, and I will address them depending on the time remaining and whether or not a similar question has already been asked. So, yes, I would ask that you all please turn off your cellphones so that we are not interrupted with that. So now we will proceed with our opening introductions, and I think we'll begin with incumbent Randy Sinstalyn.
Well, good evening. I'm Randy Sinstalyn, and I'm currently serving my eighth year as a councilman for the Fourth Ward. When asked why I'm running for city council, my response will be very similar to eight years ago, when I first ran for city council. Fergus Falls has been very good to me. I received my first two years of post-secondary education at M State here in Fergus Falls. Fergus Falls is where I met my bride of 26 years, a truly amazing woman. Thankful to be married to her. Fergus Falls is where I've had the opportunity to work, raise a family of nine children, and worship with friends and neighbors. Fergus Falls is just a great place to call home. My motivation for running for city council is very simple. I see this as an opportunity to give back to the community that has been so good to my family and I. The city of Fergus Falls has been in existence for 142 years, and I consider it an honor to serve in shaping just a little bit of its history. I believe that Fergus Falls can continue to be a great place for my children and for my grandchildren to work and raise their families if they so choose to call Fergus Falls home. And if elected, I'll continue to work towards a reasonable balance to the services the city provides with the costs of those services. So on November 4th, I welcome your vote. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Speedall?
My name is Rod Speedall. I'm a write-in candidate for the Fourth Ward. People ask me, "Why are you a write-in? Why didn't you get on the ballot?" Well, I had a change in occupation and time, and subsequently, I also had calls from people saying, "You know, no one else is running in the Fourth Ward, and we'd like some issues. We'd like a process. We'd like the democratic thing to go forward." So I said, "You know, let me think about it." Took about a week, talked to my family, talked to friends, other people who've been in office. Some said it's tough to be a write-in, but in spite of those difficulties, I felt enough of a passion for the city and for the issues that stand before us now, which I believe are a turning point, to run. So I'm not running because I was sloppy or didn't care, or I ran because events changed, and I was asked. And most of the things in my life I've done have done because people have asked. They've wanted help with something, and that's why I'm running. As far as my family background, I have a wife and three grown children. I grew up here. I came here when I was one year old, and my dad had Speedall Ski and Sports Shop downtown next to Muggs's Ice Cream Shop. I have known the city when they had lighted skating rinks, warming houses, ski hill lighted, when there were parks with flowers in, and I knew the people in City Hall as a friendly -- and my friends coming in to talk to them. I got a lot from Fergus Falls growing up. I graduated from Fergus Falls High School, and my whole life journey was set on a solid course because of Fergus Falls, the education I got here, the friends I have here. And we've always come back to it as home, even when we've traveled away. So I want also to ask for your vote. A harder thing for you, write it in. Find it on the ballot under Randy's name, a write-in space, and write in Rod Speedall. I was told by Wayne Stein, you don't have to circle the box necessarily, but you have to get the name in there for sure, and it has to sound like my name. But I'd say circle the box and write my name in there. And I will be your public servant. I want to serve the best interests of Fergus Falls and hear the voters. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we will get right into question number one. And Mr. Speedall, you will answer this first. Please describe your finance and budgeting experience and what you feel the city's budget priorities should be. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My experience in finance and budgeting comes from personal experience in the business world. I learned early on while I was in college how to run a business. Started out under Muggs Townsend. We had 35 employees that I had to manage during the year. My responsibilities were bookkeeping, ordering, sales, equipment upkeep, booking events, filing the necessary reports quarterly, doing the taxes, and doing the final at the end of the year, settling up. When you're in small business, you have to sometimes do it all. You don't get to choose to do a part. But it gave me a great perspective on what it takes to be responsible about finances, to plan things well, and to carry it out so there's a good outcome. I was a founding partner of the Speedall Ski Guard north of Fergus Falls in 1975. That's still operating. I was president of the Fergus Falls Soccer Association when it grew from 250 members to 500. We received state affiliation with the NYSA at that time, and I was part of work with Senator Kell Larson on securing $100,000 from the Minnesota Kicks Program and other funds to the American Legion to establish the soccer fields at Del Lagoon. I walked those fields off with a round tape measure that I got from City Hall here to see if we could do it. Presently, I'm encouraging my son and daughter-in-law in their exciting new chocolate venture in Fergus Falls, making chocolate in Fergus Falls. What a great deal. I've also traveled overseas as a pastor educator. I've had to raise the money for that. I've raised support for funds like schools overseas, for wells, for projects, and I've managed apartments in Fergus Falls while I was a seminary student. I've rented three different places in Fergus Falls. I've been a renter, a tenant. I was also -- and I'm also now a homeowner. So I've seen different sides. Financially, I think I understand, especially from the business side, what it takes to move things along. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Sinstalyn?
I have a bachelor's degree in accounting from Morehead State University. I've worked the past 23 years at Otter Tail Power Company in positions of development, project management, purchasing, and now currently in resource planning, all of which have required financial analysis, planning, forecasting, and budgeting. I've been involved in the city's budgeting process over the past eight years. The city is very fortunate to have folks like Bill Sunmore and his staff that are very dedicated and diligent employees, and I commend them for their attention to detail and process, and they do good work. As far as budget priorities, I believe the core functions of a city to be safety, which would be police and fire protection, and the second would be basic infrastructure, which is your streets, water, sewer, and garbage services. Those, I believe, are what I would consider the core functions of the city.
We will now go on to question two, in which Randy, you will have the first opportunity to answer. What top three city services or infrastructure need -- excuse me, let me -- what top three city services or infrastructure need addressing, and why should these be priorities?
Well, first, streets. We have over 100 miles of streets in Fergus Falls, and all at different stages in their life cycle. The city engineer, Dan Edwards, and his staff do a good job of prioritizing the funds that are allocated. They prioritize the seal coating to extend the lives of the streets, to delay the more expensive mill and overlay process, but we have several street sections that are too far gone for even a mill and overlay and require a more expensive or the most expensive complete reconstruction. And we can all think of some of the street sections that need that complete reconstruction, but it comes down to funding. And I would like to see the city to explore using a half-cent sales tax to supplement the state aid or the gas tax funding rather than increasing property taxes to fund the much-needed street repairs. Second item, workforce. Right now, businesses have more job openings than there are qualified people to fill them, and I believe that needs to be a focus of the near term. And third, library is upcoming. That's a wonderful service and is getting a significant amount of focus, and there's a question coming up which I'll talk more about.
Okay, Mr. Speedall?
I believe that our city services and infrastructure needs and priorities must be tied to our larger plan for what the city wants to do, our strategic plan and our vision. Our website says that we are here as a city to promote "This is a preferable place to live and work, provide friendly, safe, supportive atmosphere, preserve and expand our natural beauty and environment, provide quality services for our citizens, promote and encourage new and existing business and industry, and plan for growth and development." That vision, I believe, needs to be reflected in our budgeting and in our infrastructure needs. I also would put roads and the maintenance of those roads at the top of my list in terms of a priority, summer and winter. I believe we have to avoid oversaltin'. I believe we have to have people to understand Minnesota winters. Plowing must be done well and consistently. Having grown up here on Channing Avenue since 1954, I saw how roads are plowed again and again. I think a doable plan on road repair is in place. My question is the public input and the way that we carry out that plan. Reliable infrastructure is key. In one area in my ward, the water pressure is low in houses, so people complain. When we buy a house, we're told we have to put in a pump. I don't know all the ins and outs of that, but I do believe that all citizens of Fergus should have equal access to the public works rights and the same standards for everyone. Some residents would like a dog exercise park. I've heard that. Another part of this plan, or the second emphases, I would say, is park and rec. Our services and budgets, at least from my perspective and a history here, seem to have been taken down and degraded, from an all-American city to maybe a Plan B. I don't know. We can't seem to maintain flowers. My Uncle Speedy, Speedall, was the first one to put up signs on the city parks and have flowers in the parks. We had people come to town. I think that park and rec needs to be looked at, and our priorities for attracting people need to be maintained in Fergus Falls. We shouldn't neglect our natural beauty, the scenic river, Lake Alice, or any of those things.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'd like to say if you have a written question you would like to submit, we're going to gather those after question three. Volunteer Laurie Mullen, will you be willing to gather the questions from people and bring those up to me? Thank you very much. So if you have a question, you've got about three or four minutes to submit them. All right, we will get on to question number three, and Rod Speedall, you will answer first on this. Please describe your vision for business and economic growth in Fergus Falls and the steps that you will take to achieve progress toward that goal.
A realistic approach to economic growth and business is obviously multi-layered, multifaceted, involves everyone in our community. Right now, there is a concern about economic growth on a lot of people's lips, but there's one issue that's before us right now that does affect us largely in this area, and that is the Kirkbride. Some are on one side, some are on the other. The investor has promised to bring his own funds, $10 million leverage of his own monies with his partners, and the rest in grants, heritage monies, federal and state money to bear on this project. We have a $20 million first phase and a total of $40 million. That's about the budget of Fergus Falls, $40 million, $42, I think it is, or something this year. My concern about the vision that we need to have is that we must put at the top of the list the thing that is on the plate. We have to learn to take hold of the opportunities that come our way. Our vision cannot go forward unless we learn to grasp these opportunities. Our history and the recent past shows that people like Doug Burgum, who's developing downtown Fargo, not a man without any means, one of the richest men in North Dakota, was basically let go or dismissed or not really looked at seriously in terms of the Kirkbride development. Jeff Slossman is another person that seems to not have been taken really seriously in terms of development options. I believe in our development for business and economic growth, we have to make sure that the city is ready to grasp the opportunities that come its way. And typically, managers are not developers. Typically, administrators are not entrepreneurs. And so whether we have a separate commission that works closely with the city, or we change the way we're doing this, we have to quit sending away investor after investor, especially when they're qualified. We have one now who has done 50 projects, who has a stellar record, great board, and we're haggling over an RFP that we don't even know is really the best RFP in the world. Who's examined the RFP to see if it's really top-notch? The economic development is tied to the attitude and the way that we treat investors in Fergus Falls. A couple other things quickly, since I saw the sign go up. I think I still have 30 seconds, right? Thanks, Mark. We need to put more money. Cities around us are putting in, they have three or four more staff than we do on our economic development. They have funds set aside to sweeten the pot, some of them up to $1 million, to sweeten the pot for people that are ready to do business. I don't think we're sweetening the pot at all for this guy. We've got $770,000, almost a million, three-quarters of a million, that we could put toward sweetening this, and that's now strings attached. So the attitude of the economic development is what I'm concerned about, and that's at the heart of this question.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Speedall. Randy?
Could you read the question again?
Yes, okay. "Please describe your vision for business and economic growth in Fergus Falls and the steps that you will take to achieve progress toward that goal."
Very good, thank you. Healthcare continues to be a strong area of growth for Fergus Falls. Pioneer Care, Lake Region Healthcare, Lakeland Mental Health, Lutheran Brethren Homes, The Veterans Home, Life Smiles Dental, Envision Eye Care, just to name a few health-related organizations that together have invested millions in facilities in the past few years and that employ hundreds of people from Fergus Falls and the surrounding area. Manufacturing is another important part of our stable economy. Businesses like Vector Windows, and Northern Contours, and Shoremaster, and Quality Circuits, West Tool &amp; Design, just to name a few, and forgive me, I know I missed some. These organizations have become significant employers in our community, and I'm grateful that they have chosen to locate their businesses in Fergus Falls. The city is taking steps to provide areas for growth, and the Port Authority has over 150 acres of land available for expansion in our industrial parks. And in my opinion, the best thing the city can do is provide critical infrastructure at a reasonable cost and get out of the way so that entrepreneurs can grow and expand. Now, I have a bit of time left, and I'd like to address a couple of points that Mr. Speedall has suggested, that somehow the city has rejected the thoughts of Mr. Burgum, and that's just not the case. If you rewind as to when Mr. Burgum was involved, we were looking at a Chinese college coming to town, and the driver behind that was NDSU. Well, the need for that went away when the main driver behind that was, you know, a sponsor of that would be the president of NDSU, and that is no longer -- that went away when he went away from his role. And it wasn't that the city wasn't willing to work with Mr. Burgum. That project died. And so to say that the city was at fault there, I think, is just a complete misrepresentation. And then the other gentleman, who, by the way, has a good portion of the RTC currently, you know, we have worked with him, and to say that we haven't, I think, again, is a misrepresentation.
Okay. Are you -- you're finished?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Mullen, would you gather, if you have questions, written questions, show her so she can pick those up? All right, we will go now on to question number four, and Mr. Sinstalyn, you will have the first opportunity to respond. "In the 2013 community survey, 97% of respondents said that the public library is an important economic asset. How familiar are you with the public library renewal project, and what is your vision for this project?"
Fergus Falls residents, as well as the surrounding area, have embraced the public library and the services that it offers. And again, I applaud city staff, the library board, Erin Smith and her staff, for the great job of creating a valuable service for the community. Through the library renewal effort, they have engaged the community in exploring library services, and I'm sure they will bring a quality project forward. As for funding, Fergus Falls has very kind and generous people. There is over 1.1 million of donations that the city has received for a library project. I foresee the remaining amount of a library project being funded through a half-cent sales tax, similar to the ice arena funding, and I expect that the ice arena bonds will be paid off at the end of 2016. And that has been paid for by city sales tax and, again, by the very generous donations of community members. And I see it being reasonable that two years from now, in 2016, that a library project proposal could be on the ballot for voters to consider a half-cent sales tax to start in 2018 for funding this project.
Mr. Speedall, response, your turn.
I have used the library from as early as I can remember, when it was on Union Avenue, north of the bowling alley, and it seems that Erin is doing a commendable job as director. I especially love to see the way she's gone through an open process. She's sought to get a survey of the city to determine how well they respond, how well the library responds to different parts of their services, how pleased people are with the library, how accessible it is. I think that's really commendable, and I think that Erin has, in talking to her, has a good grasp of what we need. So I support what they're doing. We have a great selection in BTR Architects, and the 14 proposals seems like it was a great, you know, it was a nice wide range, and so going with this group, it looks good. I realize they have to make final decisions on the site recommendations, according to Erin. I just talked to her last week, but I support that. I think their mission is crucial to Fergus Falls, that they provide literacy, that they make sure that there's community meeting space. I mean, the library's a little hubbub of activity. You get on there, there's always people coming and going from that area, so it's a great -- it's a great place for Fergus, and I support it. I am very wary of things that would add to our tax burden, and so that part, I'm sure, is being carefully looked at, and I don't have any particular objections to those. I think that in the long term, the whole city can benefit from the kind of approach that Erin has taken in developing this, plans for the library and surveying residents. It's a model to look at. Thank you.
And now we will go on to question number five, in which Rod Speedall will answer first. "The future of the Kirkbride is an ongoing community discussion. Please comment on your vision for this facility." Mr. Speedall?
My vision for the Kirkbride is that the council members should make a yes vote on the 27th and go with this developer. There's been enough questions and stalling. I believe we should go forward. Historic Properties is a national and well-organized organization with partners that are credible. I believe that this vision for Kirkbride can include much more than is right now being listed, but that beginning it is crucial. You must start something. My uncle Walt used to always say in business, "Nothing happens, Rodney, till the sale is made. Nothing happens till the sale is made." I'm appealing to our council in looking at this big picture. Nothing's going to happen until you vote and make it. Let the sale go. Let them have a chance so that vision can start to build. And I can see that this could be a hub for some brew pubs. It's a great place for brew pubs, and they've got one planned already. The restaurants and, you know, and apartments are typical developments, but the culinary school is not, and having a daughter that graduated from a culinary school in Arizona, I just see it'd be wonderful to have that kind of a thing in this facility. In the longer term, I can see destination weddings at the castle. There's options for this unique building to be used and to benefit our economic engine in Fergus Falls. I think as we look at the loss of Hoot Lake revenue in the coming years because of the shutdown of the coal plant, which we don't want but likely is on the horizon, we must be willing to take hold of opportunities when people come with $20 million in very good financing backing. What will that do turning over in Fergus Falls again and again? We don't have anything like it. So I encourage us to keep an open mind in the Kirkbride and don't lock in the developer to such a tight schedule development that he can't develop, because business actually is not a linear equation. You don't go A plus B plus C equals D. By the time you get to C, sometimes A is changed. So you choose someone who has a record, you choose-- So you choose someone who has a record, you choose someone who has demonstrated they can do the job, and they have. And that's why I think the vision and future of Kirkbride hangs right now within this next week. Thank you.
Randy?
Could you repeat the question again?
Yes, sir. The future of the Kirkbride is an ongoing community discussion. Please comment on your vision for this facility.
In my opinion, the best outcome would be for the historic Kirkbride proposal to proceed with the assurance and the documentation that demonstrates that they can do what they say they can do in the timeframe that they say they can do it. And until we have that documentation, I believe it's an imprudent decision to move forward. And so voting yes, as Mr. Speedall suggests, without that documentation, I would think is doing a disservice to our community. In the absence of that documentation, the city should remove the exclusivity arrangement it has with the historic Kirkbride organization, which would open the door to other folks who may have viable projects for the city to consider. Parallel with removing the exclusivity arrangement, the city should proceed with developing the plans and specification for selective demolition of the facility so that we can have an understanding of the updated costs associated with partial demolition. Now, there are some that believe that the fate of Fergus Falls hangs in the balance on whether the RTC building stays or goes. I'm not one of them. Fergus Falls is not going to fall apart if parts of the Kirkbride are removed. I remain hopeful that some or all of the buildings, building will be developed by either the historic Kirkbride organization or some other developer with a viable project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now we have our final, excuse me, official question. And Randy, you will answer first. Now, we recognize that city council terms are only for four years, but what you do during your term lays the groundwork for the future of the community. How would you describe Fergus Falls in 2024?
2024, 10 years from now. I see Otter Tail Powers, Hoot Lake Power Plant, retired as has been discussed. It's been an integral part of Fergus Falls since it began operating in the 1950s. Not only will the loss of 40-plus employees be a blow to the community, there will be a significant reduction in tax base that's associated with the power plant. For the year 2013, over 10% of the city's tax base, tax capacity was associated with Otter Tail Power Company and a good portion of that capacity is associated with the plant. So that is a significant deal that the upcoming event that the city needs to prepare for. I see Fergus Falls expanding geographically to include areas like Woodland Heights and River Oaks. I see Fergus Falls increasing from the current $10,000, or $10,000 level of employees to 12,000 jobs. I see the healthcare industry still being a significant portion of our economy.
Okay. Rod, would you like me to repeat the question or do you?
No, I understand the question, thank you. How would you describe Fergus Falls in 2024? A city in 2024 would be a regional hub, what it was meant to be, what it used to be. What it is known, it would be known all around the area for a city that uses best practices in its financial planning with the progressive council and administration. A city with a new library built on the good planning we see going forward now, the survey of the community, et cetera. I imagine a city that has flowers in its parks again. Those of you who know Narnia know that sometimes it was always winter and never Christmas. Well, I think it's time for Christmas to come back to the Fergus parks. Might seem like a small thing, but I know hundreds of people that came to admire those flowers and I was one of them. I envision a reasonable and workable sign ordinance that creates enough order so that people can still come to town and spend some money going to garage sales. And somebody is now collecting signs on a hundred-some thousand dollar salary. I believe in a city where things are there to be done by youth and children alike, that we have services for children. Attracting families means that we have to put our eggs in the basket of what we want to attract. And what I hear most from people when I walk around is there's nothing to do for the kids. That wasn't true when I was young, but it is now. I'm giving you the perspective of the voters, not the council. I would envision a city where there are places for biking and walking that are built right into the road repair, that they're careful. If I would have ridden my road, my bike on some of the repair that took prolonged repair this summer, I would have been dead because of some of the edges of the curbs and stuff left open and not marked. And those of you who ride bikes know it. I don't know how many do, but I do a lot and have all my life. We need to make the city not a bike city, but a bike-friendly city in the areas that people use for bikes. A redeveloped Kirkbride that attracts people, yes, I would like to see that. But more than that, a scenic river that is developed in such a way that we realize this is the gem, the most valuable piece of property we have in Fergus Falls is from the mill to the Barefoot Park. And right now, there's garbage in the cheese plant, you can drive in there, there's a mess, broken windows that we all just avoid looking at at the mill. And we have an opportunity to put places where people could have RV hookups up above the river. We can have a water park down there with splashboards. We can have a skating rink that people can use. You know what the hours are for the so-called community skating rink right now? Does anybody know? Monday through Friday, 1 to 3, I think, and Sunday evening, that's called the community skating rink, Baldur Dash. That's not a community skating rink. Finally, I want you to hear this. If you want to go fast in City Hall or in some project, go alone. But if you want Fergus to go far, let's take all the citizens and go together. There's a brighter future for Fergus Falls in laying this groundwork. Thank you.
Okay, well, that concludes our official questions. And I've received, are there any other questions from the audience? Yes, here we go. All right, the first question we will ask is to both candidates. And we will alternate and go with Rod Speedall first on this question. Should we continue to support our municipal golf course? So Rod, you will have the first opportunity on that.
The word support is kind of big there. I'd like, I'd like to clarify that. Support in the sense that we should have a golf course in town. I grew up golfing in there, you know, at Pebble Lake. But pouring money into a golf course that's always in the red or mostly in the red many times, I don't know what the total is exactly. I know Randy probably knows, maybe it's 3,400,000 we put into that in shoring it up. If Morehead can operate a course in the black, I think we should be able to. If Stocker Lake can have two people that move here from Wisconsin and started working a golf course, you know, without funding and stuff, we should be able to run a municipal golf course. I have suggestions on that perhaps and how we would do it. I do question if we're bleeding red, if we have to have a pro in residence at the golf course. The golf course should run the black just like any other thing. If the city's operating businesses, make them run in the black. And my opponent has had plenty of time to deal with this and he's an accountant, he knows this, but as a businessman, I wouldn't let it go on. It's not fair to the rest of the services in Fergus, especially our cuts in the library that we've had, or the cuts in the Center for the Arts in the last budget, the cuts in the Historical Society, the cuts in economic development initiatives. I, I think it's foolish to let that go on in the red. And I don't know why it should. Anything else would be slapped on the bottom and said, hey, wake up. But this isn't, this isn't, you know, I don't understand it. So I think we really should deal with that. We should support it. We should have a golf course. Shouldn't let it be in the red all the time.
All right, Mr. Sinsland, you're, should we continue to support our municipal golf course?
I think at the root of that question is, is a golf course good for Fergus Falls? And I think the answer is yes. But yes, the answer is yes. The level of support that the city garners that direction is, is, is an annual discussion because it, it, it has been an issue and has been a problem. They, they have been losing money and meaning that they're not able to support themselves up to this point. Now, this year, things have, have gone significantly better than prior years. And, but long-term, I think there is certainly some things that do need to be, to be addressed there. So I don't disagree with my, Mr. Speedall on that.
Okay. I'm trying to read this next question. Next question. If we remove the exclusivity, I'm assuming with the Kirkbride project, will the city be willing to market the Kirkbride internationally? And what is the city's?
Plans.
If we remove the exclusivity from the Kirkbride project, will the city be willing to market the Kirkbride internationally and what is the city's plan? We will let, who was, Randy, you'll answer first.
Okay. You know what, the council as a whole decides on that. I don't know the answer to that. Would I be supportive of expending funds again for marketing? No, I would not be. We've been down this path and we're at the point where we're at. And ideally, again, I'd love for the historic Kirkbride proposal to move forward, but if it doesn't, then remove the exclusivity, allow folks that, that have had an interest in the past to jump on board with, with something. But no, I don't believe that marketing it again would be something I would be supportive of.
Mr. Speedall?
I just want to hear you work through that question one more time. So could you just read it one more time?
If I can read the, no, I got it now. If we remove the exclusivity from historic Kirkbride, historic properties, excuse me, will the city be willing to market the Kirkbride internationally? And what is the city's plan to do that?
Well, hearing the answer of my incumbent, who is speaking still on behalf of the city as a council member, not representing the city, but speaking in his role, I would say you heard the answer there. I'd really, and it's curious, the question is kind of directed in a way that I can't really answer that, like what is the city going to do? What should, you know? And it sounds like removing that is not really much of an idea. Frankly, and I can't, so I can't answer the question directly, but I will speak to it, that I think the, the lack of ideas, that is, the one-track mind of destroy the Kirkbride, tear it down, has really been like a broken record in this thing. And I was curious in an earlier debate, if you know, another member of the council said on Monday that, well, he's not putting any money of his own into this. This is all like grants and stuff, the first 20 million. And I, my jaw dropped and I thought, doesn't this council member read the things that come across the desk? And I sometimes wonder if the council members are reading the new proposals or the options or if they've just already made up their mind five years ago that we have to tear down part of it. It seems like predetermined thinking. Now, I would only say that the major difference between myself and Randy on this is that I don't believe you can cut, save, or demolish your way to the future. As a businessman, you have to have economic engines. You have to take chances that are, there are risks, but they are measured risks. And you have to do things that involve some faith in the process. I think there's been way too much, Randy mentioned that, a disservice to the community about the, regarding the, what I said about the Kirkbride and that Fergus might fall apart. I don't think that. I just think you're missing a great opportunity for an economic engine. Let's say you take 20 million, 10 million of that's earmarked for stuff, okay? Let's say you take it, the city actually takes it. I don't think these councilmen will, but let's say you do. Earmark grants have to be spent a certain way. You've got $10 million that has to operate in Fergus Falls for a while, even if he falls apart on this thing. What happens to that 10 million? I think Randy knows what happens to money in community when it's spent. It multiplies sometimes seven or eight times. What else you got going that you're going to plop seven or eight or 10 million into Fergus in the next couple of years, City Council? What else we got going? What's on the table? Cut, save, cut, save, don't tax is not a way to go to the future. Be financially responsible, don't add new taxes, but use the economic engines you're given. This is on a plate and really, if we miss it, we're just being, I think, stupid. So, sorry, not accusing him of being stupid, I'm just saying we are being stupid.
All right, I think we have time for one more question. And that is, what are your thoughts on the current state of downtown and the vitality of Fergus Falls in general? So what are your thoughts on the current state of downtown and the vitality of Fergus Falls in general? And Rod, we will start with you.
Thanks. As I said, my dad had Speedall Ski and Sports Shop when it was next, after Muggs Towns and his ice cream store. And I used to go across the street to what is the Viking again and again to eat. There's some economic, good stuff in Fergus Falls, the Vikings are one of them. But I also remember when there used to be three or four restaurants downtown, including Scogmos and others, and there were dime stores and there were places where you could shop for clothing and there's Anderson Larson and there was St. Clair and Roveng and you could get outfitted here in Fergus Falls. So if you want to ask me my personal opinion of the economic energy of Fergus Falls, I see a continual decline. People have to go to Fargo to get a decent pair of clothing or shoes, whatever. I watched the mall come in. I watched this whole thing happen. I watched my dad's business get sold. And so personally, I have a heart for small business in Fergus Falls, but it really doesn't matter just what I think. It matters what the people are saying, matters what the people in other communities are saying. And what I hear people are saying is, we don't have much going in Fergus Falls, guys. We're going downhill. What I hear people saying is, we've got like three to five years to turn this ship around and it takes new leadership and new thinking on the council and in City Hall. And if that doesn't happen, then you're going to put increasing tax burdens on an aging population to keep all these services up and you ain't going to have the money to pay for these things, no matter how careful you are fiscally. So you've got to create something. Now, this whole thing, well, I guess I'll, I'll stop there. We've, we've got to move forward with it and I think, you know, that's important. The economic situation is not good in Fergus Falls as a whole. Thank you.
Randy?
Okay, so two questions, downtown and the overall in general. Downtown, no doubt, looks different today than it does 20 years ago. And it will look different 20 years from now than it does today. It's, but different doesn't necessarily mean better or worse. And, and so if you walk downtown, you know, there's not, there's not a lot of vacancies. And so their businesses are occupying the downtown space. And, and so I view that as a, as a very good thing. In general, you know, I mentioned earlier how, you know, the, the millions and millions of dollars that the healthcare industry has, has invested in the community and, and what the clinic is doing right now, that's, that is a, those are very significant items and, and they ought to be acknowledged and thanked for their, their investment in our community.
Okay. Well, now we will have a concluding statement from each, closing statement from each candidate. And you will each be given three minutes for that. And Randy, we will start with you with your closing statement.
Very good. First of all, I want to, I want to thank Chris for moderating and, and Mr. Speedall for organizing this. Appreciate the, the opportunity to, to be here. As for closing comments, I sincerely believe that the future is bright for Fergus Falls.
As for closing comments, I sincerely believe that the future is bright for Fergus Falls. And I would consider it an honor to serve the people of this city for another four years. And, and I again respectfully request the voters of the Fourth Ward to, to vote Sinstall in on November 4th. Thank you.
Rod, your closing statement?
Thank you. I have laid out in my canvassing and in the midweek a large, positive, and yes, risky set of options for Fergus Falls. That is, I'm willing to put my ideas on the line and say, "We should do these things positively." Some candidates, some people in office don't necessarily propose a lot. They try to save. They hang in there. They don't get criticized a lot. The people that take some risks do. The mayor of Duluth recently stepped down. He'd been serving, he served two terms. He was the youngest mayor elected in Minnesota. I think he was elected when he was 25 or 26 years old. I think he was 37 or 38. Great article on him. He said that a person shouldn't go into politics just because they want to serve or give back or do something. They should go in because they have a vision and a plan, and once they accomplish it, they should get out. I've given you and risk putting out a lot of stuff here. The scenic river development, the Kirkbride, developing RV places there, putting in a skating rink people can use that we can flood. Not all expensive pipes and stuff you still have to fix because there wasn't a good enough analysis done of the construction of that hockey arena. Something that's affordable where the people can do skating, they can go skiing, they can have a central place, or, excuse me, they can go, they can go swimming, they can have a central place for, for walking, they can have smallmouth bass fishing on these, on the river. We have opportunities, but we've got to lay them out. So all I would say for the future is, there once was a city that was founded on a scenic waterway. The early leaders risked their lives, their reputations, and their fortunes to purchase the land, to settle the area, and to go forward. It doubled and tripled in decades because of that. Private investment and state grants. There were leaders who promoted parks brimming with flowers later on. There's a lovely lake where they used to row in the heart of town. There were lighted rinks, there were skating areas. And there were many things in the summer you could do without a fee. There were parades, and there were fireworks on the 4th of July. And there were outdoor basketball courts, which, by the way, have vanished from Fergus Falls. There's one, actually, Hannah Park, excuse me. There were events. This city boasted even the longest continuous foundation building built in the U.S. from the 1890s till 1940, till the Pentagon was built. That's the Kirkbride. Visitors found cooperation. What I want to say to you is, the future belongs to the voters. I'm running because I'm passionate about the issues. You can see that. I'm running because I want children and grandchildren not just to say, "Yeah, we're still in Fergus, and we got good healthcare." I'm not dishing that. But there's a lot more than that. I want our children to say, "There once was a city, and my mom and dad and grandpa and grandma and cousins and aunts and uncles and friends came together to reestablish a vision and make progress a reality." I hope they'll say they cared enough about Fergus to dare to make things happen. I'm a candidate that wants to make things happen. I'm a write-in. Please vote for me.
Thank you, Mr. Helen, for keeping us on track. And thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. And I'm sure if you have further questions to personally ask the candidates, they would be more than willing to stick around for a few minutes. So thank you for organizing this, Lori, and for helping to organize it and getting the democratic process going. And remember to go out and vote November 6th. That's the key. November 4th. Don't go out on the 6th. Go out and vote November 4th. Thank you very much for attending.
This is why when overtime, I was sitting in Jay's seat.
Well, don't go out on the 6th.
You're welcome.